Good morning, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, June twenty second. And all three commissioners are present at the Net U Hill Meeting Room at the courthouse and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Giffens.
Good morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Alright, thank you so much. I'm going to, we have an agenda item we would like to add, I'm going to make a motion to add item F to our agenda, which is in agreement with Barnes and Thornburg not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments? Okay, all those in favor of adding Agenda Item F, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next, we have our department updates. And we have Ms. Cottle here from the Health Department.
Good morning.
Morning.
Penny Cottle, Monroe County Health Department, wanted to give you just a couple of updates in general. Our COVID nineteen cases do continue to be stable, although transmission is still high. And hospital numbers are remaining steady and deaths so far remaining low. So that's the good side of that high transmission level. So we still need to be cautious, be aware that there's still a lot of virus that's circulating. But especially the vaccine is keeping people out of the hospital and not having severe disease or death. The CDC community level this week is still at low. That is updated every Thursday, so we will always look at that on Thursday and make sure nothing's surprised us and that that's changed. Monday, our average number of cases were down to twenty seven, that's kind of on that rolling week average. And cases per hundred thousand, or per ten thousand, excuse me, we're at fifty two. So just kind of an update, we are seeing, you know, not a lot of change, but a little bit. So we're watching that very closely. In terms of vaccinations, so good news in terms of vaccinations, children six months to five years are now eligible for COVID vaccine. Our staff is anxiously awaiting and in preparing for the vaccine to arrive, for us to prepare it, to make sure staff are trained and prepared for this age group. And we expect to be starting those vaccinations next week. So it's possible it could come earlier, but we got to get staff trained for this. And the vaccine is coming kind of in waves. So you're getting ship, shipment here and a shipment there to make sure everybody gets a little bit. You can make an appointment at our Public Health Clinic on Miller Drive by calling eight one two three five three three two four four. And that is our Public Health Clinic on Miller Drive, so they can schedule an appointment for you. We'll have all vaccines available and make sure that anybody who's eligible and needs vaccine can get that. Also that I would say we're still working, I anticipate that we may not be back up on that vaccine map until closer to the end of next week for July. We had some hours shift in July and they just did the one change, it looks like they didn't go ahead and update June. So we're waiting for that to be updated, but that should happen soon. Home tests are available, we still have those at the Monroe County Health Department. So individuals, if they have run out of what they ordered from the federal government, for example, or they just need a couple extras, they can come in and get two per person for their household. And they can come into our office at, on Seventh Street from eight to four. They can go to the Public Health Clinic and get those as well. And then we're also distributing those to shelters, other agencies that may need them, that serve more vulnerable populations. So we have some plans in place as well to get those out to other groups that may need them. So we're, we're excited about having that possibility and that option for individuals. So if you can't get online and order them, but you can send somebody to get them for you, or you can come in, we'd be happy to do that, our nurses will have them at outreaches that they do as well. And then on the non-COVID front, monkeypox is of course making the news. So as of June seventeenth, there were a hundred and thirteen cases reported in twenty states and Washington DC. Two cases have been reported in Indiana so far. So the main thing to remember is this is still rare. It, we are seeing this increase, so that's where the concern is. And the risk to the general population is still low. So just want to reassure people about that, but there's lots of good information out there. The CDC website can walk through what the, you know, the rash is what's most contagious and that can be even in your mouth or on your body. So it's really close contact with somebody with those symptoms. So pay attention to what's coming with that, but know that in general, it's not something that we all, we need to be aware of, but we don't need to be overly concerned, just cautious and aware. And then the last thing that I want to do today is introduce Lori Kelly. So Lori will take over as the administrator on July fifteenth. And she started last week, so we're very grateful to have this overlap so that she can meet other department heads, learn county processes, all of those things. So we're excited to get her going. Lori comes to us with a master's degree in both health administration and philanthropy. She has a grant proposal and management certificate and has assisted in her sec grant proposals for the IU School of Dentistry. Her healthcare experience gave her experience and accreditation, so you know that we're wanting to become an accredited health department. So that will be a great experience that she will bring to us. She's developed policies, procedures to ensure that accreditation standards and measures were met. And she has experience in training and developing new staff and students. She's done teaching at the university level, so we're very excited to have her join the department. So I will just introduce Lori Kelly to you.
Thank you so much.
Now just welcome Lori Kelly.
Well, welcome, Ms. Kelly, we look forward to working with you. It's really exciting and thank you, Ms. Cottle, as always, for your update. Alright, is, are there any other departments that have an update for us today? Come to the microphone here in the Net U Hill room or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is public comment. The public comment section on our agenda is for the comment, comments from the public for items not on our agenda. And the, there's a limit of three minutes per speaker, at two minutes and thirty seconds, you will hear a tone. And when you hear that tone, that means you have thirty seconds to wrap up your final thoughts. If you are on Zoom and you wish to join in this public comment section, please raise your hand on the Zoom screen, but we always take commenters from within Net U Hill first. And here we have a commenter, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, this is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. We often come before you to advocate positions, both pro and con, on a number of issues. We have a role to play as a voice of business in this public arena, and sometimes we agree and, and sometimes we, we are at odds. But that's a good thing for democracy. Today, I want to commend the Commissioners on their effort and their work on behalf of Monroe County residents. On the judicial front, last December, the county was recognized as exceptional by the state for its juvenile detention alternatives initiatives. Chamber applauds the effort in reducing racial and ethnic disparities. Along the same lines, we are encouraged by the recent progress we have seen by the Criminal Justice Response Committee. Margie Rice has been an outstanding facilitator in this group. Results will go a long way in creating a new and innovative justice center. And with the new funding available, we anxiously await seeing a progressive twenty-first century method of incarceration with a shared goal of reducing recidivism and providing a pathway for those in our legal system to become contributing members of our community. Finally, we are pleased to see the planned limestone heritage site come together with the purchase of those seventy acres on the northwest side of the interchange of State Road forty-six and I sixty-nine. This is a real opportunity to develop and more of a tourist beacon that uniquely captures our history and the entire Uplands region. I thank you for your time this morning and thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate you being here. Does anyone else have comments for items not on our agenda? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium. Okay, seeing none, we will move on with our next item.
Item five, please. Move approval of the minutes for June eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any comments, corrections, edits?
Not for me.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes of June eighth, twenty twenty-two, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. My next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket payroll June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and accounts payable June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second and we have Mr. Miller joining us via Zoom. Good morning, tell us all about it, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was very large, it accounted for two weeks, of course, and also included settlement. And having said that, the total was one hundred twelve million, one hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and nine cents. One hundred nine million, four hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-three cents was for that settlement distribution for spring of twenty twenty-two, followed by seven hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars for Comerica Bank and Trust for twenty twenty-two pension payment for our Sheriff's Department. Three hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy cents was for Anthem Inc. For June claims as well as stop loss. Three hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred one dollars was for Area Ten Rural Transit, primarily for the first quarter FTA or Federal Transit Administration operating grant. And finally, wrapping up the larger expense items, three hundred thirty thousand dollars was for E and B Paving, Inc. For billing number one of Cars Farm Greenway Phase Two. As far as the total for payroll, it was one million, seven hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty cents. One million, two hundred nineteen thousand, sixty-one dollars and fifty-one cents were for the direct costs of payroll. And the remaining five hundred eleven, nine hundred thirty-six, five hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents were for indirect costs.
Excellent, thank you so much, Mr. Miller, we probably should not take off Settlement Week again in the future. Yes, excellent, okay, so let's see if there are comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, thanks.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Any public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor approving the claims docket payroll June seventeen, twenty twenty-two, and accounts payable June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. I will note that, thank you again, I will note that we have received a report from the Treasurer and this is for May of twenty twenty-two. We will now move on to new business, please.
Move approval of a change order number one with Fox Construction, fund name, twenty eighteen GO bond, fund number forty-eight eleven, in an amount of one thousand, four hundred eight dollars and five cents.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, Ms. Ridge, tell us all about it, please.
Good morning, the change order is for the Highway Garage remodel project that's ongoing. The space was originally for a small dorm refrigerator, it's been changed to a trash recycle bin with a track in it. The change order cost is actually within the contingency amount, so it will not increase the overall project cost.
Excellent, thank you so much, we're getting down to brass tacks, as they say. Excellent, comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I hope it gets completed soon, so you can't get moved out there.
We'll be there before winter. It'll probably be in August, I think furniture is scheduled to be installed August eighth, and that'll take two weeks. And that should be about the final, final piece.
Excellent, Commissioner Jones?
Just very pleased to hear it's moving along so nicely.
Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Net U Hill room. Okay, seeing none, we'll come back for a vote, all those in favor of change order number one with Fox Construction signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of soft choice Adobe Acrobat Pro DC Enterprise Level Licensing. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number eleven thirty-eight dash three zero zero four one, in an amount of forty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety cents.
Second, we have a motion and a second and we have Mr. Evans joining us, good morning.
Hello, there's no pen at the podium to sign, just giving you a heads up on that. Today, we're talking, okay, first, I have a correction to make, looking at the actual quote. When they sent me the quote, they included tax on that, and of course, we don't pay tax. So the actual amount that you're voting on is forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars.
I will make a motion to amend the motion on the Adobe Acrobat Pro DC Enterprise Level Licensing to an amount of forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Any public comment on that motion to amend? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. And will you continue, sir?
Okay, so obviously Adobe Acrobat is a central part of doing business in today's day and age. You know, it's something that we have held off on buying enough licenses so the bulk of our staff can have a copy. And I think within the last year and a half, that has changed enough that we really need to start including Acrobat as our base image that goes out with our machines that we deploy. So for the past year and a half, I've been working on trying to get this to a price point that we can live with. It, Adobe Acrobat is not an inexpensive program. You know, most people use it just to convert a Word document to a PDF and they don't understand why they should have to pay a couple hundred dollars for that, but that's, that's the way the market is. A couple of things about this particular deal that are nice. Number one, with this being an enterprise level deal, it's scalable. So we're starting out with three hundred and fifty licenses. As we need to add more people, we can do it à la carte, you know, we can do it in one, we can add two, instead of having to add groups of a hundred or five hundred, which is how we had been structured before. So when we do exhaust the three hundred and fifty, which I think will be a little ways from now, we can start adding people and just pay that à la carte cost. Couple other things that are included in this enterprise level package that'll be helpful down the road. I had been working with the outgoing recorder to look at getting OCR solutions. OCR, of course, stands for Optical Character Recognition. It's what happens when you take a scan of a document and you turn that into words that are then searchable in a database. This deal bundles in the Acrobat OCR as part of that. So maybe that'll work for the recorder's needs, but if not, you know, we can look at getting some third-party product, but we're getting this as part of the deal, so you know, I figured we'd go ahead with it. The other thing that's included as part of this, that they typically license separately, is the PDF slash A designation, that is the archival standard that where they bundle the fonts along with that document and that PDF file is meant to last a good hundred years longer than otherwise. That's included in this licensing, so it's a pretty good deal and I hope you vote yes for it.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
It does sound like a good deal.
Yeah, as always, you have found us a bargain, so thank you for that, appreciate it, as always. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium in the Net U Hill room. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote, all those in favor of the amended motion for soft choice Adobe Acrobat Pro DC Enterprise Software, sorry, licensing, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, our next item, please.
Move, move approval of limestone Nomad Service Agreement, fund name, actual, fund number eleven seventy-nine dash three zero 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 six dash zero 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 in an amount of one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and we have Ms. Whitmore here to tell us all about it, good morning.
Excellent, good morning, we have Senior Day at the Fair, everyone's invited, Tuesday, June twenty-eighth. Lunch is twelve to one, bingo's one to two thirty. And with that, we have a musical group, Nomad, the group, and we would pay them a hundred and fifty dollars for one hour of bluegrass music, so. Do you have any questions?
Sounds like a great idea, Commissioner Giffens, comments, questions?
I, I think it's really fun that you provide lunch.
Oh, we.
Or it's just during the lunch hour?
Oh, it's during lunch hour, we do bingo and some fun socialization. We've been doing this over twenty years, I believe, so it's a lot of fun.
It's a great, great idea, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't, thank you.
Is there any public comments on this item? Either raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Net U Hill room. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote, all those in favor of approving the agreement with Limestone Nomad signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero, thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eighteen amendment to Monroe County Code two sixty regarding courthouse rental.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Purdy, tell us all about it.
Yes, good morning, this is just an update to our current courthouse rental agreement that we have and we're making some changes in that we are requesting that security be increased to forty-five dollars per hour. And janitorial services, should they exceed the normal expectations of an event? Because janitorial service is a standard one hundred, but if there is excessive cleaning that's required, we will add an additional forty-five dollars to that, which will be deducted from the security deposit. And the other thing I wanted to make a note of is, we would like to strike, it doesn't show it on the document, but we'd like to strike item B under two six zero dash three. That indicates approved users may have their use canceled for a higher priority within forty-eight hours of their event and that's, we find that that's obviously not fair to some people who are planning a very large event. And I think the only time we've ever had to cancel anything was due to pandemic, so kind of trumps everything that's going on in the world at that point in time, so.
That's true.
Okay. Okay, right, thank you so much, comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I, I'm not happy about the forty-eight hours cancellation. Especially when somebody's been planning something for six months.
Correct.
I, I think if we have a pandemic, we generally, or something like that, unless it's, it's occurred just right within that forty-eight hours, I think we generally know more than forty-eight hours beforehand for cancellation purposes. So I'd, I'd like to see us expand that, if possible.
So do you mean to qualify it? Or do you mean to delete that, or what would you, what are you?
Well, I, I would, I would be much more comfortable with a week prior, rather than just two days, but that's me personally, you know, when we see things that, like Downtown Bloomington, Inc., when they do the Christmas program. They plan that for months in advance, and so to think that we could cancel that in forty-eight, with only forty-eight hours notice, doesn't quite seem fair to the organizers.
Yeah, that's, I mean, sometimes we have people who have weddings and the last thing you'd want to do is cancel somebody's wedding. And we've not had to cancel any meetings or any events, but it does cause just some concern, the very fact that's on there, that seems to be restrictive to, to the community if they have reserved the facility. This is, this covers both the inside and the outside of the grounds.
Yeah, so are you suggesting, Ms. Purdy, that we just delete that altogether?
Yes, sorry, I obviously was not clear on that, that should have been shown as a strikeout on document.
Got you. I'm good with that. Okay, I mean, because it is, does not appear in our packet or to the public as a strikeout, as a strike through, then I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to amend this, even though it's, you know, you're aware of it, just so that it's official. I'm going to move that for ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eighteen, that we amend item two six zero dash three, deleting item B, B as in boy, off of, off of that, okay, does that work?
Second then.
Alright, we have a motion and we have a second. And let's see if there's any comment on the amendment to the motion, raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of amending the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eighteen, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries to create an amendment, anything else, Commissioner Giffens?
Not for me, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, let's see if there's any public comment on the amended motion. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Net U Hill room. I think this is a win-win, win-win, so thank you for all this work. With that, I will call, let's see, call for a vote on the amended ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eighteen. All those in favor of that signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. I'm gonna make a note, okay, now we'll move on to the next one, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, don't we have to vote on the?
I, we just. We voted on an amendment and we voted on the.
Okay, okay, that's all good, I thank you. Try to wake up. Move approval of the agreement with HealthNet for prenatal care, fund name, Local Health Maintenance Fund, fund number eleven sixty-eight, in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and we have Ms. Cottle here to tell us all about it.
Yes, so this is a renewal, we have for many years provided funding to assist women who are pregnant with prenatal care expenses. We had it with the CHAPS clinic, we had it with volunteers and medicine, and now with HealthNet. So many women come in and they can get Medicaid for their delivery, but the prenatal care often falls through the cracks. And so this agreement just puts funds there for those people who might otherwise be falling through the cracks. And so it's a renewal and it's up to fifteen thousand dollars and we use local health maintenance funds to cover that cost.
Excellent, thank you so much, comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I'm really happy to support this, we know good prenatal care leads to better outcomes for both the mother and the baby.
Absolutely, Commissioner Jones?
It's unfortunate that Medicaid does not cover prenatal services, but I'm very pleased that we're able to do this as.
Yeah, and you know, there's always someone who's going to fall through, so they may be, you know, some may be able to get it, but there may be circumstances that prevent somebody from it. And so this is really that, filling that gap for those that, that don't, are unable to get the coverage they need.
I really applaud this effort, this is great. And it's nice to have it available in a number of places because that means you're going to reach more people, which is, which is the key here, right?
Right.
Excellent, thank you so much, let's see if there's any public comments on this item, raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Net U Hill room. Okay, seeing none, we'll come back for a vote, all those in favor of approving the agreement with HealthNet for prenatal care signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And we have our amended item F, next, please.
Yes, move approval of the agreement with Barnes and Thornburg in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a motion and we have a second and we have Mr. Schilling joining us to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Thank you very much. This is a joint engagement letter with Barnes and Thornburg. The county, the Plan Commission and the Plan Department have recently been sued and the county would like to retain Barnes and Thornburg. Because there are multiple defendants, they need to have this joint representation letter signed where in some cases where there's multiple parties being represented by one attorney, the interests will slightly diverge. And so they want, they want an acknowledgement that that's a possibility that you'll proceed anyway with one counsel representing you. So it's, this is something that's required by the rules of ethics to have this signed. So we present that. And I guess if you're desirous of proving that, that you would authorize the president to sign it on behalf of the Commissioners.
All right, do we need to make that part of an amended motion, Mr. Schilling?
I would, I would ask that you do that.
Okay, all right. I'm going to ask that we amend item F to include that President of the Board of Commissioners will sign on behalf of the Commissioners, given a positive vote. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion is amended by a vote of three zero. And did you have anything else to add on this particular document?
No.
Okay, comments, questions, Commissioner Githens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm just pleased that we were able to work this out.
Really good work. Thanks for organizing this. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the NetU Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of the amended motion on the agreement with Barnes and Thornburg signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three zero. Thank you. Excellent. All right. And we don't, we do have an important appointment today.
Yes, move approval, the appointment of Jamie Nible as our Monroe County Emergency Management Director.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Welcome aboard, Jamie. Be great to work with you. All those in favor of approving the appointment of Jamie Nible as the Emergency Management Director signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Excellent. All right. We have just a few announcements. The next Hoosier Hills Food Bank Fresh Food Fridays is this Friday, 2333 West Industrial Park Drive. You can call 334-8374 for more information. If you're in need of food assistance, the line was huge in May and I'm going to plan to be there. And it's a great event. It's great for the community. It's just sad that we need to do it. The next blood drive will be Monday, June 27th and Thursday, June 30th. Mondays, Blood Drive 10 to 3, Thursday, Blood Drive 1 to 6. Both of those are at the Ivy Tech College. And that is in Shreve Hall. Thank you to Red Cross for your help. And if you want to make an appointment to donate blood, please go to redcross.org and look that up. We don't have any other announcements unless any of you do.
Just want to remind people they can get free COVID tests at the Health Department at 119 West 7th Street, as well as at the Miller Drive Clinic.
Great reminder. Anything else? Excellent. Okay. And so with that, we do not have a work session today. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you here next Wednesday.